Five o'clock, get the meeting started, start out with pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic for which this stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, the great and just for all.
Roll call.
Mockler, Ray Loeb.
Here.
Brady.
Here.
Teasy.
Here.
Gilbertson.
Here.
Any conflict of interest? Hearing none. The approval of agenda?
Move to approve.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All same sign? Motion for approval minutes?
Move to approve the minute, uh, minutes.
Second. Do we have any additions or?
Pretty clear, I mean, there was like, maybe one, one word. Oh, no. I can't remember.
If you found it, let me know.
Alright, there was like, some, like a one-word typo that was. That didn't. It really changed it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All safe sign? Hearing none. Motion's brooked. Have any visitors? Be heard?
Hey, my name is Robin Shiro, I live at three eleven East Washington. Um, street in Elk Point, um, I just wanted to let you know, um, make you aware some of concerns that are occurring, some crimes that are occurring in your communities, I tried to turn these terrorist criminals into the city. I mean, the Clay County Sheriff, excuse me, last April, but as you are aware, I was illegally detained instead, even when one of them crimes, including turning in the members, murderers, excuse me, of the thirty-three-year-old Union County Sheriff, Dan LaMose. Therefore, I'm submitting a document describing these crimes to you with hopes that the Clay County Sheriff will respond, since as I understand it, the Clay County Sheriff's budget is approved by the Clay County Board of Supervisors Commissioners in this case. These terrorists who breached Homeland Security have also committed human trafficking, racketeering, murder, kidnapping, torture, rape, grand larceny, forgery, fraud, and many other crimes in our area. Um, I want to thank you for your time and consideration, but most of all, um, thank you for what you do for Clay County, South Dakota, I do have a copy. I know previously I had talked to you about some election fraud issues, I wanted to let you know that I met with the state's attorney, uh, I mean, state's attorney, excuse me, the Attorney General this past weekend, uh, when I was at the State Central Committee meeting, and he's working on those issues. I also met with Lance Russell on my open meeting issues, since I had talked to you and you had deferred me and, um, my county is not willing to work with me on those issues, so I went and worked with Lance Russell on those issues, uh, the open meetings issues, so, thank you again for your time.
Any other visitors? Seeing done, move on.
Heger group is online. Morning, can you guys hear me?
Yes, sir.
Awesome. So just wanted to give you an update, and I apologize if I couldn't be there in person, uh, but a quick update based on our conversation two weeks ago, uh, I took those notes, and I believe we've got those incorporated completely. Um, a couple of highlights I wanted to point out, we, I had interpreted it incorrectly, when I had said that, you know, on a project-by-project basis, the commission can say, yes or no, we're gonna do the RFQ, the RFQ process has to happen each time regardless, it's whether or not you want, whether or not you have to hit the minimum of three. There's some criteria that you can base that decision on, so it's always has to be the RFQ, whether or not there has to be a minimum of three is where you get that latitude, so I wanted to clear that up. One of the items that was noted was the scoring was confusing, and I would have agreed with that wholeheartedly too, I tried to simplify it a little bit, simplified it by adding another math equation to it, so take that for what it's worth, but you get that final score that we originally were proposing, and then you divide it by a thousand, so that it equalizes it, and everybody, it's a, it's a more fair, um, not fair, but a more, a clearer understanding, lowest, lowest score wins. It works because the, the project, if it's over a hundred thousand dollars, it has to be, um, you can't just be procured, you know, on your own, you have to go through the bidding process, so it works with that math as well, um, and it's a little more intuitive for the public, because they don't see a dollar figure associated with that number, they see a raw score instead. Went through, um, the other one was adding a procedure for procuring during public emergencies, I assume that may be a rare occurrence, but we had to have that in there, so that's been added as well. Big picture, we've got all the changes made, the last step is, uh, finishing the actual drafts of the RFQ and RFP, uh, assuming you guys approve this policy, those are ninety-five percent done, um, I would just want to go back and read, you know, check everything before I sent it on to you guys for, to let it become yours, um, are there any questions for me, though?
I'm just pleased with the update, so I think Scott has one, sorry.
Yeah, I don't have a, don't have a question, Tyler, but I reached out to Brian LaMose, he's the USD Facilities Manager, and he sent me their form that they use, so if that's of any use to you, I could forward that on to you.
Be great, just to make sure, because they do this kind of work all the time, so make sure we're thinking the same thing.
Okay.
Thank you.
So I'm inclined to approve this, I was just wondering a little bit on process, is this something that we resolve, or, uh, how do we, what's, or do we approve it as a policy, or, or how does that go?
That's a good question, actually, that's a question that we talked about yesterday, actually, Dave asked me that question yesterday, and yesterday I was kind of of the opinion that we just, now that we have it, we can utilize it, but, you know, I don't think, probably wouldn't be improper, it wouldn't be improper to say that we're going to approve this, um, as, you know, as written, so that in the future we can use it, I mean, the reality is, is that it's gonna be project-to-project, as to whether or not we want to undergo design-build or, um, that, whatever, contract manager at risk, or construction manager at risk, uh, you know, so we're not tying ourselves to utilizing this procedure on every single, um, uh, project that we need to have bid it out, that we're gonna have to decide to utilize it, but probably wouldn't be, it can't be improper to say that we're going to approve this as a pro, as a process that the county will undertake and utilize this document for, um, the framework.
So I think that most of our other policies are just in the employee handbook, so I'm thinking maybe we just add like a short statement at the beginning of whereas it is sometimes in the county's best interest to have an alternative method than bids for a smaller project, you know, do a little bit of whereas language, and then make it a resolution, and then that we resolve that we will utilize the following, uh, uh, policy at our discretion, uh, when the commission feels that a project wants it, something like that, is that?
Yeah, I didn't think about putting it in the employee handbook, is there a spy?
Well, I don't think it really fits well there, I guess that's what I'm thinking, but I don't, I don't know that we have much for policies that are floating out there, independent standalone policies, we pretty much, we either resolve stuff, or we modify the employee handbook, or we modify the ordinance, like zoning regulations or something, so I was just thinking.
Yeah, then there could be a resolution that could just, that we could just file, you know, that's, this is something we're gonna undertake on a case-by-case basis, I doubt we did that with the construction manager at risk, uh, but now that we're utilizing the second process, I can certainly prepare a resolution.
That seem reasonable.
Yeah, I think we just need to draft this up. Yeah, right. Thank you for doing the legwork on that, Tyler, like, good job.
No problem.
Any other discussion or questions?
Does it, does it have to say that we, that we will use it, or we may use it?
I think we'll want to have language in there that allows us the discretion to utilize, uh, this or the other process, and, you know, if it's a lower dollar amount, we don't have to go through either one of these processes, so, why can't make sure that it's written in a way that gives us flexibility?
Thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you, Tyler.
You guys have a good day.
You good?
That's not a good sign, uh-oh.
I try to utilize technology here today, see how this works. Turn that one off.
Let's see.
Was on earlier.
Oh, now I end up turning this one off.
So, what I'm here to talk to you about today is the courtroom security project, and I give you a little history on it, because there's quite a few members that, I think, all the members were not here when this started. Uh, I started in February twenty twenty-two, and shortly after I came here, they approached me about getting on this committee, about courtroom security project, there was some funding out there, grants available out there, they wanted to apply for it to enhance the, the security of the courtroom. So. Try to explain to you. So, there's actually a couple phases of the project up there, basically, it entails everything in that judicial area, which would be the, uh, the north side of the courthouse, from east to west, so. There's a lot going on here, um. Lots, there's a lot of, there's a lot of steps to it, but I'm gonna concentrate on courtroom A, which is the large courtroom, so. The project is designed to, like I said, to enhance security in the, in the courtroom, and then this whole section back over here, so. One of the things they wanted to do, is they wanted to, uh, when they bring inmates in to be formally charged, whatever, they would have to seat them out here, in the spectator area, which is, and I, I don't think Andy's on, but, which, from what I understood, is problematic, because, you know, you might have loved ones there, spectators, you might have an enemy there as a spectator, so, so they wanted to, they basically wanted to take this jury box, move it over here, and over here is where the county clerk's court desk is at, and move them over there, it sounds pretty easy in itself, but it's not, because, because of the amount of space that's here, in a close proximity to the judge's bench, the judge's bench would have to be moved six foot to the east, and the jury box would have to be moved over to here, so. May not be such a big deal in a modern-day building, but when you get in a building that was built in nineteen twelve, you got all historical woodwork, we have this behind the judge's bench, that would have to be moved over to here, we got a bunch, this railing has, would have to be moved, there's a bunch of woodwork behind these chairs, so basically, you're kind of almost redesigning the building, and you're moving a lot of old, significant historical woodwork around, so, this project here was a little, and this room here was a little over a hundred thousand dollars to get to accomplish what they wanted to do. And of course, so when you're moving this over to here, you gotta move all the technology with it, you gotta move all the electrical with it, there's, this also would have security video and audio installed within this room, which is needed. So when you move, when you start moving stuff, okay, now you start to have scars on walls, scars on floors, you gotta redo your flooring, you gotta redo your wall, this wall behind here, most people don't know it, that's a fabric on there, it's not a plaster, so if you move that, you're gonna have a huge scar here, that was fifteen thousand dollars alone to fix that wall. Just to get somebody to come in, and know it's how to work with plaster, make it look right, et cetera, et cetera, so. This project, I won't go into details over here unless you want me to, this project, I call it phase one, phase two, was get, got put on hold, because, we did, we did draft up, but we needed to draft up, we did procure the grant, have the money. I can't remember the actual dollar amount that we have right off the top of my head, but then we had the mechanical electrical project taken off in twenty twenty-two, I believe it was, or twenty twenty-three, that wrapped up in, in April of twenty twenty-four. So we put it off for that, then we decided we'd upgrade the elevator, so that pushed it back even, because originally we'd slated to probably start this in November twenty twenty-four, well, we had to push that back because of the elevator project, so, so. What's happened in the interim is, the people that are, the people that are on this committee, is our Judge Burns, myself, Kim Allison, Jessica Posey, and Andy Howell, and Dick Hammond was on it too. So, the judge comes up with this idea, which I thought was very good idea, it's kind of hard to see if the pictures on it, but we have this corridor here. I call that the judge's chambers corridor, this room here marked judge, this is original print from nineteen twelve, by the way, this judge's office here is court reporter's office, there's another officer where this picture is, and that's the, uh, that was the judge's chambers, well, the judge, in the small jury room here, is now the judge's chambers, and this one here underneath the picture is where the visiting judge's office, so. Judge Burns says she had this idea, and I went up, went up to see her one day, and this wall here, well, actually. Okay. So. What the judge suggested, you all see that pretty good? But her suggestion was, let's extend this wall all the way to east, to this wall. Okay? Increasing the length of this corridor, so the inmates can come down here, or jury, and enter into here, leaving the jury box where it was, we'd have to do some work on it to make it ADA compliant, you have to make that door wider, and you have to do a little work in here to make it wide, and maybe even make it longer, that's what this yellow line indicates, so we'd have room for a wheelchair accessible. So extend this, make this a secured hallway, if you will, all these doors, closed, lashed, et cetera, and you have to bring inmates. Drop this wall out between the judge's chamber, the visiting judges, and create that as the judge's office, as the judge's chambers. So. I had a contractor come up, look at it, give a number, so we kind of had an idea of what we're looking at, and he said, he said probably, you know, roughly about twenty-five thousand dollars to do this. Uh, of course, there's gonna be incidentals that we don't know about, that stuff you just don't, you don't think about the time, one of them was widening this door to ADA, so I think it's gonna be a little bit higher than that, but it's, you know, it's a lot less intrusive doing this than this than moving all that around down there, we're still gonna have some reproduction to do on woodwork in this area, when we go up in here and work, it's gonna be a whole lot less than, than moving all this round, we had budgeted forty-six thousand dollars for historic woodwork on that original project. We budgeted twenty-five thousand dollars alone, just in case that fancy woodwork imploded behind that bench when we moved it, so, this is a lot less intrusive. I think it makes more sense, we came together as a committee last Friday, and we all talked about it, and they're all on board, I thought that was a good idea, uh, there was talk of some other things they'd like to see done while they're in there, one of them is, uh, where the tables sit right out in this area, for the, for the lawyers, was getting, uh, some electrical in the floor there, which makes sense, mounting a TV over here, so the jury has a good line of sight of the TV, uh, putting some electrical over here that's needed, so there's a few things like that, that weren't, that were talked about, that weren't originally budgeted for, um. Tammy reached out to Scott Sheldon, I don't remember exactly his title, but in the South Dakota judicial system, that this grant was, came through, and they were fine, said, don't rewrite it, just go with it, if you go over, it's on you, so. In reality, I think it's gonna be a little bit cheaper this way, uh, how much, I don't really know, because this is twenty twenty-two, and we know inflation, so, it might come out to be the same cost, but I think it's gonna be a little less on this way. So, they wanted me to bring this to you, and let you know what's going on, I don't know if we need an approval or what, but just so everybody's kind of on board, know what's going on, if you want further explanation about what's going on over here, I can surely explain the rest of the project to you, while we take the time.
Sure. Well, I'm just, I'm gonna just address this first page you're talking about, I, it was perfect sense, because we're gonna maintain the, or the historical value of the building, without messing things, changing things, and that, I mean, that's no-brainer to me.
If we extend this down here to here, we have this brand that goes across, then we may have to move back to the south, we may lose one row of queues, but nobody on that committee thought that was a concern, that's all.
I think weighed against all the other considerations, I totally agree with Dave on that.
Yeah, that's, I mean, losing a row of queues, how often is that court home, once every three years?
Yeah, Tuesdays for magistrate court, it fills up.
Oh, yeah, Michael's on the committee.
Yeah, I'm up to one, that's alright, uh, it's also, uh, it's also, like, Tuesdays are a big day, um, but we can make work without that extra row, and the benefit is that jury box, uh, right now only has twelve seats, and if, any trial now, um, that goes more than one day, there will always be at least one, if not two alternates called, and so we don't even, not only do we have ADA compliance problems, um, of course, it's a hundred and twelve-year-old courtroom, uh, but we also don't have those alternate, those alternate, uh, spots available, so, if I have a multi-day trial, we will always seat thirteen or fourteen, and we only have room for twelve, so extending that box for a lot of reasons is gonna be a good thing, and I imagine, I would, I'd be a big advocate to move it, I think that losing that, that row, um, is worth being able to extend that box, um. It also will give, I think, some more separation from the jury to the, to the gallery too, which is a good thing.
Um, where, so where is the, the defendant's path into the courtroom now, then, so, so then they're gonna be going in through the back door, right, or, or, yeah, how's that?
Right now, they enter just through the main doors that everyone else enters through, coming off the elevator, and then they just walk either in, in front of, like, judges, either in front of the judge or behind the attorneys, uh, to get over to.
They come in here, then, like?
They, they do, and it's.
This door up here.
It depends, if there's, it depends on the day and how many inmates there are, sometimes the sheriff's office will have them seated in the jury box, but they still have to come through the main doors of the courtroom, those, then they'd usually enter that one single door, um, where you're in, where the, uh, attorneys are at.
Okay.
Or, if there's only a couple inmates coming up, they still might come through that door and just seat them right there, um, right, once you get in the door, there's a couple of seats, um, occasionally, they'll even, if there's, depending on how many deputies there are, and kind of what's going on, sometimes they'll bring them through the double doors and seat them in the first row of benches, so it really does depend, um, but this will give a much more secure, um, access for transportation, uh, you know, that'll benefit the, the inmates, it'll also benefit.
So, so their final location in the room isn't changing, it's just how they're getting into the room.
Yeah, right.
So that the jury, or how the jury gets into the room, so the jury doesn't have to walk right past them, is that?
So, in a trial, in a trial, the jury would be seated right in the jury box, and then there, you know, you're only dealing with one defendant, um, and so the, kind of how that, from a security perspective, kind of works is drastically different than how it would work when, like a, like a normal court day, where you're bringing up maybe three, four, five, six, seven, eight inmates, um, so a lot more concern on regular court days today, from a security perspective, um, but this will give a better plan for security purposes, both for the inmates' staff, you know, from deputies to attorneys to judges as well, it's a better, secure process for everybody.
Thank you.
I forgot you were here, sir.
That's alright, I like it that way, you feel me?
So. Um. I go on to the other phase. Um, out in this, this is that, uh, north stairwell area, uh, there'd be a secured door installed here at the top of steps, this door here, coming out into the main corridor, this would be a secured door, where I mean, guys secured, is the only way in or out would be with a, with the right credentials. Um, yeah, and they would be wired back to the fire panel, in case of fire, they would automatically rele, release, and you could egress through them freely, and then, we have the existing jury room, here's where our elevator is, by the way, it used to be the men's bathroom, in case you want to history, uh, just to take this wall down. This is not, I had this checked by, uh, C, Structural Engineer Association, Sioux Falls, this is not a load-bearing wall, we remove this wall, this is, this currently is the, uh, Public Defender's Office, so this wall would come down, making this a larger jury room. But this one is, even though it says large, it's very small, very close proximity to the bathroom, which is right here. This is, and then we have there is a doorway here, into, they call it the county courtroom, which is a small, we call it the small courtroom now, so, this is secured, that's secured, that's given these judges or other people way to maneuver through here, get over to here, without coming out and down into here, their defendants, whatever. Way to maneuver through here, get over to here, without coming out and down into here where defendants, whatever, you might be sitting. So it makes it a more secure way for them to transition over here, makes the jury room larger, which is. Needed. This, the women's bathroom right here, which you have to step up into, uh, the corridor, we take this. That bathroom. Bind the two, enlarge them. Become an ADA unisex bathroom. So. That, that's handled. Rest of the project. Over here, there's a little stuff to do. There's a bench, the judge's benches here, they want it back, they want it over here. There's a couple of other minor things here that are pretty minor. And then you have this secured, security video and audio in this small courtroom also.
So how does the restroom work for the, like, if you, if you have a jury trial, like, is, do, do the? Does the jury have to have its own restroom that's not a public restroom or?
You wouldn't have to, but you'd have to have a bailiff that would.
Okay, so they just escort you to that, make sure you're the only one in there and correct, pass you a note or something?
Correct. So there would just, there'd be somebody that would just have to come along with you.
Okay, so, so the entrance to the restroom would be out in the hallway. It would no longer be accessible from the jury room. Is that right?
I don't know what that, do you know that answer, Scott?
I think we looked at it both ways. I think we looked at having two entrances on there. You know, you lock the one.
Yeah.
But. Probably it might be better if it's just the one entrance out the hallway. You're still going to have staff that might need to use that bathroom too. Yeah, it wasn't something we worked on a lot.
Minor, sorry, right. No, and right now the jury room, um, when we have jury trials, judge has been allowing the jury to deliberate in the courtroom rather than in the jury room. Because of how cramped it is. And then also, if you've been in that jury room and you've needed to use the restroom, uh, it's not a private event. Uh, and so, uh. And so like now we're, we're even already.
Yeah.
Separating, you know, the, the jury already is deliberating in the, in the, uh, in the courtroom now. And so they're not accessing and utilizing the jury room as it's intended.
Well, that's kind of the project that I'm not sure.
It seems like that would be just a nice central meeting space in the building as well.
A great meeting space and, um, especially, you know, with. With this project, you could lose the, the fence, the public defender, um, office on that floor. But of course, with all the moving parts that are going to happen right at the same time with this other building. Um, I'm sure that there's going to be room set up somewhere else, but yes, we're right now, um, you know. There are a lot of attorneys coming in and out of the courthouse and meeting with clients and it would be optimal and preferred that there's some more space to, for people to be able to meet. And so this will, I think, ultimately provide some of that as well.
Yeah, it'd be a space to be designed with kind of quiet privacy, you know. Sound dampening, those sorts of things, good doors.
Correct. Yes.
No, it sounds kind of. Maybe old school, where we're dealing with an old building on the bathroom thing. You know, kind of like, I would think it's a safety issue if the jury. The jury, you know, is sitting in the jury room and they're using that bathroom and there's also access from the hallway. You know, you've got a jury member in there and a defendant, family member in there. I would think it's a, can you just, like, when the jury is occupied, the jury room, lock the hallway and just have a sign, you know? Unaccessible during these timeframes or something like that. I guess that I would think it's a safety issue.
Right. And I think it would be like a one occupant.
Yeah.
Bathroom stall.
Oh, it's a single stall.
It's a single.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, that makes sense. So it's not a multi-stall.
Yeah.
A more, yeah. Right.
It would also then allow. It's, you know, the only men's restroom in the courtroom, court, right, or courthouse right now is on the first floor. So this would allow access, right, via.
Yeah.
Little things. Which is nice, actually, like for me, when I seat a grand jury once a month, um, you know, I've got. Uh, right now I've got a couple of older gentlemen who have some health issues and, you know, the elevator was out of commission, so that created a whole problem. Their jury room right now has that bathroom that I was able to allow them to use, but, um, the only. Public bathroom for men right now is, is on the first floor. So this will improve that as well.
Space for your grand jury is on.
Could be, yeah, depending on what we're doing.
The other questions for anybody?
It wouldn't hurt to just do a formal approval of this modified plan. Um, the, the grant itself stays intact. This dollar amount should be less. Um, than what we have grant approval for. And so like Scott said, we don't need to, we don't need to reapply or do anything with the application. Um, but i- if, it probably would make sense to have some commission approval on moving forward with this new modified plan from what the original one was. So that we can start getting to work. This is where design build's going to eventually come into play here sooner or later.
Open this, do design up events or?
I think as far as, because this is a courtroom security grant, so I think the secu- I think that's really within the wheelhouse of, of the committee. And then it's going to be working with contractors to see whether or not, you know, this is something that they're able to do.
Okay.
Second.
Motion to second. Any more discussion? Both in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Both say same sign.
Thank you.
Passes.
Thanks, Scott.
Yeah.
So I, um, have, we talked, I can't remember the last time I was in front of you guys. Um, talked about updating our camo system in the assessors office. And I've got final kind of contract here for chairman to sign, just looking for approval on that. Um, to kind of catch up Kevin and Glenn, because I don't believe you were here last time I talked to the commission about this. Um, our office currently utilizes two different softwares. One I call like our calculator. It's our computer assisted mass appraisal system. Um, and we've been having some issues with that, keeping it up to date, support, that kind of thing. Um, and then the other system that we use takes our full and true values and turns them into taxable values. And that is, it used to be a for office software, um, hosted out of Sioux Falls by Patty Guthrie. She's been looking to retire for the last couple of years. Um, so the registered deeds, treasurer and auditor all found solutions that work for them. They were kind of the last piece of the puzzle. And I wasn't able to find something to work with our current camo system. Um, that would service just our office. A lot of the other counties in the state that use what we use have a. Another for office solution that didn't, um, work for Rhonda and Carrie. So. Um, I kind of went on a long journey of finding something that would do everything we needed it to do, starting with the calculations of full and true. And taking it all the way to taxable, so that we can just dump those taxable values over to Carrie. Um, and catalyst had the piece of the puzzle that worked the best for us, um, best fit for price, best fit for what we can do. Um, I don't know if you guys have been following the legislation on property taxes the last couple of weeks. Um, kind of scary in my world, what administrative tasks that might end up adding to my office. And had a phone call, I've got Todd here is my, my point guy at Catalyst and had a conversation with him where he talked me off the ledge of, oh yeah, we've done that in other states. We, we can handle that with our software. Um, so I'm, I'm really excited about it. I, I hope we can make it work. I know we'll be looking at a few budget supplements in the future. If we try to pay it out this year, I'll make sure that I've got enough in my budget next year. I did turn in due to lost salary training, whatnot from the absence in our office. I turned in about twenty-four thousand dollars last year that we could look at using for my supplement. Um. But really today I'm just looking for approval of signing the contract. Any questions on? Anything in there? Oh, yeah.
Did a good job explaining all this initially when you're considering this, so I'm comfortable moving to approve this.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same side. Motion passes.
Thank you very much. We're looking forward to implementing it this summer. It'll be several stages until we get it there. Hopefully next year when you get your assessment notice, it's out of the new program. So, thank you guys.
Thanks, Lynn.
Um, I also, as an aside, different point, we do have our meeting with the township members tomorrow night to talk about assessment changes we made this year. If any of you were interested in attending that before our county boards of equalization, you're certainly welcome.
What time is that meeting?
It'll be at seven o'clock here in this room. So. Yep. Thank you.
Just make sure that there's going to be a quorum that we get noticed.
Good thinking, yeah. Are others?
I haven't looked at.
Yeah, I'm probably not free, actually.
Yep. That should be.
Otherwise I'll have all the materials available in my office too, if you wanted to come in and talk it over at a different point. So this one's more geared for township members and the local board and their deadlines and dates. Um, and then county board will happen later. So.
I, I haven't made it to either of the other two since I've been on the commission, but I think it would be interesting to. You know, we hear the aftermath when we give consolidated boards, right?
Yeah.
So we do or should not have.
It sounds like there will not be a quorum if.
I won't be able to make it there.
I will be.
Travis, I think is Travis.
Glenn has had the pleasure.
Should I not go or is it okay if I do?
Through the treasurer for the more weight township?
Yeah.
Well, we won't have a quorum anyway, so.
Yeah, okay, yeah, there won't be a quorum, so it'll be fine. Yeah, it's obvious.
Yeah.
Yep, it'd have to be three to have a quorum and we'll just have to give notice within twenty-four hours that we're hosting.
And Glenn, you were just wondering if there's like a conflict, if you're on a township board as well as the commission.
There isn't, because I don't vote.
Okay.
As a treasurer, I don't vote, but I didn't want to have any.
Sure.
Nope, yeah. Issues with the.
Glenn has had the pleasure of being at them in the past. Yeah, yep. All right, thank you.
So Rod or Brad, we're moving the bid opening till next week.
It was advertised as next week. I mistakenly had it on the wrong week when I prepared the agenda. And, uh, realized that yesterday, so.
Joint powers, um, counter agreement. Emergency funding agreement. We just need to sign this. Any discussion on this?
Um, not really. It's just a modification to, um, the emergency relief agreement that we had already signed. It just allows us to get some funds from the state. Rod can probably.
Yeah, you, you don't actually have to sign it. We already did it. Um, turned in the minutes, but they're sending it out. Just there's wordage in the fore about how reimbursement is, um. Paragraph four about reimbursements. So we just left it up to you if. Um, we really don't need to do anything, but if you want to sign the new one, that's fine. Then we just have to send it back with the minutes. Other words, you know, basically. I, I really don't know why they sent it out. They just wanted us to know they changed the wording in that paragraph four.
Oh, I thought from Deanna's email that we had to sign that.
Yeah, I thought so too.
Well, that's fine. I think it says on the front page. If the commissioners want to sign it. Um. Let's see, let me get the. We're un- we're unsure if you need to take this back to your commission for signature. If you do not, we still have the minutes. If you do need to take it back for a signature, please submit the minutes. And maybe you didn't get that front page.
No, I think that, that email came there too.
Just want to do it to be safe and recovered.
And.
Yep, that's fu- that's fine.
My reading of the changes seemed to be if the Fed stiff the state, the state doesn't have to give us any money. Is that the gist of what others got? Out of this? It's, it seemed to be just a clarification that if, if the state. For some reason, isn't reimbursed by the federal government, then they don't have to reimburse us.
Correct. And, and this is, this is not FEMA. This is, uh, emergency relief funds. You know, for a federal aid rose is completely separate from FEMA.
Yeah.
We've had this before. Four or five times and yeah, nothing. Uh, there's always a first, but. We've never had any trouble getting reimbursed.
The changes in the world these days, so.
Yep. It says right here, no reimbursement will be made by the state until such federal funds are received. Yeah, that's under four B.
Okay, so that's all we need on that ride. You got anything else?
Uh, no, not, not for the highway department, just the ditch board.
Okay. So. Did up. There's some, oh, I'll talk to you at ditch board about some other things.
Okay. Yeah, can, do you want to send that back to, or just put it in my, our box and we can mail it back when we get the minutes?
Yeah, I can, I can send it out. That's fine.
All right.
I'll give you a copy.
All right.
Thanks, Rod.
Do we need to do a motion to authorize a signature on that or?
I think so.
Yeah, so I moved to authorize, uh, the vice chair to, to sign this modification, the agreement with the clarification in it.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Sign the. Agreement and discussion. Hearing that all in favor, say aye.
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 Both same sign. Motion passes. Ditch board is off the agenda.
Got a email from. Travis last night that, that he needs to be here for that. Okay.
Drew.
Are there two?
Yeah, yeah, there was two. Four, six, eight, seven, five, three hundred and eleven.
So I saw that here and then I thought when I was looking at the packet, it looked like they were the same one twice, but I, I may have just been mistaken then. I apologize. Yeah. Sorry. I, I definitely saw the O'Connor one. My.
I don't know.
The, the second one is also O'Connor P and B Farms LLC.
Huh.
So I, I.
I wonder when I added it to the PDF. Because Drew uses fillable PDFs. I wonder if it merged them into the same information.
Okay.
I've had trouble with it doing that before, but I didn't think it did it this time. It must have.
Uh, but maybe it's not, maybe not all of it, maybe.
The maps or the.
Cause.
The actual plats should maybe be fine.
Okay. Yeah, it's just that first.
Just the first, um, application that he takes.
So, yeah, but. And, and I apologize, I, yep. Sorry about that. I, yeah, so the first page. So, yeah.
I, I had to do it one other time before and. I don't know. It didn't give me any message this time that it did that, so.
Adobe was so good. Yeah.
I've noticed a lot of glitches with the software, just, just recently with theirs and I use a lot, but.
So then maybe just, um. In order to, I, I think that basically it's the county pl- plat application. So just, just the application part of it. So if you wanted to just go through for. For us like, through, through that, your correct copy of that document, then we've got all the maps and everything that we need here. So when we get to that one, we'll just have you give us that information because we don't have that in front of us, but we've got both, all the rest of the stuff for both of them, so. both, all the rest of the stuff for both of them. So, yeah, so if we start with the O'Connor one, that's.
Yeah, uh, the O'Connor one, two plats.
Yeah.
Uh, there are two parcels. Lot one is uh, set out right now as, as the old style meets and bounds. And they're plating off both lots, separating out the home lot from the uh, outbuildings, things like that. And kind of the reason it ended up being a little kitty wampus through there was we had to cut through there and get setbacks from the buildings. And um, yeah, other than that, straightforward.
Yep, appeared to be pretty straightforward to me. I moved to approve the uh, the O'Connor P and B Farms LLC plat application.
Second.
Got motion and second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Both same side?
Motion carries. We have a resolution on that too, right?
We do, yeah.
Yes.
That one doesn't have to be a roll call. I think the statute just says for resolutions that the a's and the n's have to be recorded. It's fairly roll call.
So I guess, ma- maybe that, maybe I misspoke and I approve, uh, I moved to approve the resolution twenty twenty-five oh seven. Which is approving the plat is I.
Yes, and I would have spoke up earlier, but I forgot I was scrolling and saw a resolution, so.
So, so I'm sorry. To clarify, that was the intent of my, my motion, so.
Uh, second plat of four lots. Uh, they've got four parcels, well, two parcels and they're turning lots between father and son.
Well, I guess you've got the correct first sheet there. So do you wanna just walk through that for us? So we just like, we've got, you know, we, we're supposed to be reviewing all that. That's one of our duties. So we wanna make sure we know who the people are and know what the parcel is and what the legal description, size of lot, stuff like that, so.
Uh, the uh, owner is Frank Finch of um, City. And Dan Crainer here is the Agent Portland. Uh, lots one, two, and three, and four. Community condition in the northeast quarter, the southeast quarter, northern lots one, two, and three. And accretion to said lots all in section thirty-six, ninety-two, fifty-one. Uh, lot sizes are thirty-seven, eighty-eight, fifty-two, and eighty-five. And the owner's information matches from lead seventy uh, dash nine-one-six.
So this is twenty twenty-five oh eight?
Yeah.
Correct, is that? Have to do the same?
Yeah.
Okay, yes. Move to approve that resolution twenty twenty-five dash oh eight.
Second.
I would second, I request just a tiny bit of discussion if that's okay. That's alright with the chair?
Yeah, good motion and second, any further discussion?
Just wanted to, so, and then looking through our, through our plat requirements, I'm assuming that you know, we've got those ones that should be yeses. We got those ones that should be nos.
Yeah, yes.
And all the yeses are yeses and the nos are nos, I guess. So like for the first uh, uh, four questions, all came in with a yes. And the last five, six, so it's not landlocked or great land like parcels, doesn't appear to be, doesn't adversely affect the parcel or adjoining far properties. Vacating, we are vacating a previous, no, we're not vacating a previous plat?
No.
No, okay, these have been previously planted. And no new easements, no new right of way or new roads, okay. Alright, yep. Sure. Seems sensible to me. I, I don't have any issues.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
No. Both same side? Motion carries.
Uh, Dave actually be, he's just come up and signed these.
Sure.
Oh, you brought the magic pen. I was gonna say I had one here. Um, he'll have you sign the actual plat papers. So I need, would need that one just for our records as the commission and then he'll have you sign the plats that they can file with the registered deeds.
Ready? Ready? Everybody have chance to read vouchers and the ones that were additional ones from this morning?
Think so.
I.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm in the process of setting up a meeting with the software company to see what we can do to get a report that's not so cumbersome for you guys. So that's just a lot, even for me to look at it. It's a lot.
One, yeah, with, you know, trying to do oversight, we wanna like the clearer it is, the more realistically we can do that, you know, otherwise we'll just end up scheming, so. Or at least I will. I shouldn't speak for anybody, I'm sorry. I move to approve the vouchers. For a second, if someone else will.
Second. Motion a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Both? Hearing none, motion carries. Referring any, like county park?
Uh, yes, actually, as a share, um, the, 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 the sort of somewhat ceremonial start to the Prairie Restoration Project was on Saturday, but it was really well attended. So the very first step was to hand spread seed. So some of the seed was in a state that you could easily, uh, easily handle it. And we had more than, more than seventy people uh, show up. It was really, really great turnout and uh, had some kids, which was one of my goals and people, people seemed to really enjoy it. So I'm hoping to get the rest of the seed out there next week. Oh, well, the, the rest of the, the hand gathered seed out next week and then uh, and we get the purchased seed going as soon as we can after that, so. It, I've been waiting since November, well, I was thinking this would happen in November, like an early wet snow. That's what I wanna get it into. Well, that turned out that was late February, so, yeah.
This is that thirty acre parcel?
Yep, that's right. The thirty acre, it's between the woods with the playground and the woods with the campground. So it's gonna extend that public access area, which will be really nice. It's all contiguous there, so, yep.
Building project.
I have.
Right jurisdiction. Any other commissioner?
Oh, I forgot, I, I had to look at, I'm sorry, from, for the park board, I did have one other note on there. It was like, there was a note of something I was supposed to share and that was, um, so s- some of the commissioners may be aware that the park board did have um, some pretty major management changes a few years ago. The park itself had some major changes. Um, there was a lot of moves to make sure that we had a lot of clarity and the financial record keeping clarity and what everybody's roles were. Um, a lot of this happened before, before any of us joined the commission. So a lot of it happened in the year before you and I joined the commission. So the last couple of years have gone well, but the uh, board did feel that it was appropriate to do an audit. Um, and so uh, they completed an audit and found uh, nowhere regularities in uh, in any other records that they reviewed. So they were uh, so I just wanted, I wanna make sure that I shared that. Um, if anybody wants more details on that, I might have to go and, go and get them for you, but uh, I thought that that was something, that the park board wanted me to make sure that I shared that with uh, with the commission, that uh, yep, they're doing better internal controls and uh, when they went and reviewed, uh, things are good, so.
Question was part.
Yeah.
I'm assuming at some point in time that it was voted on to take this out of production, that parcel?
Yeah, yep, that's right. So the way that that process happened, so when I joined the park board, really one of the very first things um, that came under discussion was the uh, the, the current cash rent situation there. So uh, they had a hundred and twenty-five acres uh, under production for quite a long time. And um, it was determined that there was no written agreement anywhere. Um, there was not even clarity on how many acres were under production. There was two checks that showed up twice a year. So based on those, they didn't even know what the cash rent per acre they were receiving was, or who had been the original parties to that agreement. Um, so one of the first things that I worked hard on with the commission was to understand all the parameters of that process for that body. Is that something that, you know, putting this out for bids, is that something that the park board can do? Is that something that the commission could do? But um, as we got into that process, we began to realize that um, we were we were well below market rates likely. We were getting about a hundred and forty-four dollars an acre on that ground and had been for a long time. So um, with that recognition and some discussion about what was more probable um, market rates, uh, we determined that uh, it seemed likely we'd be able to get um, do a bid process, and if the bids came in high enough that we would be able to take thirty acres of the hundred and twenty-five out of production and likely still get more income off the remaining ninety-five. So that was a park board decision. And uh, and, and the park put it out for bids with two, two separate, um, two separate bids. So one on just that parcel. See what we got there and then one on the larger parcel and that, that one, that parcel was just a one-year lease with the possibility that we could have decided to do, continued that or, you know, put it out, backed out for bid, but that was, that was a determination, so.
I understand all that, but so the park board made that decision?
Yes, yes.
Not the, not the county commission?
The commission, only thing we do is we lease the, the county park land to the park board.
Right.
We have no control over the park board.
I'm just questioning losing that revenue is my concern.
Yes, but the, but the, yeah, it was just, I mean, I think a very legitimate concern, the park, you know, the park board operates under its own steam. You know, it doesn't get an allocation from the state aside from that or from the county aside from that um, uh, that subletting. And so the park is allowed to use all the ground within what it's subletting to support the park operations. And we were getting substantially less income off that farm ground before, so, yeah.
I get that. We were only getting a hundred and forty-four before.
Yeah.
But it's, it's worth what it's worth. And we're not losing that revenue from that parcel. That's
Yeah.
That's my, that's my issue with it.
Yep. Yeah, we, we are also um, receiving an additional sixteen thousand dollars approximately by taking that out of production. So we're receiving two five thousand dollar anonymous donations to support the restoration project and a six thousand dollar pheasants forever grant. So we've been getting about seventeen thousand dollars in, in cash rent cumulatively. So we're actually almost doubling at least for one year, what we're pulling in on that. And I think that there's hope that in the future, what this is gonna help us continue to do is support some of the other income generating things that happen out of the park. So the, the other way that our revenue is well up over the last couple of years um, has been through campground reservations. So we, we modernized our reservation system, got on the state system, and so we're consistently getting a lot more income from there too. So um, I, I if, if you'd like, I'd, I'd be happy to sit and we can, we can spend some more time or I could bring a report to the commission to, to share about this more details if you'd like.
As long as that, as long as we see those dollars. I, I think we should see those.
That's never been the relationship and I would feel uncomfortable with that. I mean, you can see, like, I think that it's important to, if, if what you're asking is oversight of those dollars, I think that's entirely appropriate. If you're asking that those dollars get returned to the general budget, that's not the.
No, I'm not saying.
Okay, I, I misunderstood. I apologize, Glenn, yeah. Yeah, absolutely. I'd be happy to walk you through all of that if you'd like. We could sit down with uh, with the treasurer. Alright, that's fine. I'll put a request in for that and we'll, we'll have a, just a review of the finances uh, for, if you'd like, we can do it at the next commission meeting or if you wanna push it off. Yeah, I don't know what's.
That's up to you.
Okay, alright. So I will absolutely do that for you.
I should just be in the industry.
I think that's a good idea. Yep, yep. And I think on the tails of that discussion of the audit, you know, I think that that's, that, that makes a lot of sense.
This is an annual.
Yeah, is the board previously it got itself in a lot of trouble by not submitting itself to that sorts of uh.
I'm familiar with.
Yeah.
Agreement before, so.
Yeah.
Any other commissioners, board, can we move on to the flat?
I'll uh, give a real quick turnaround. The whole county development company, I went up there uh, and I very full of estimates, it's, it's almost crazy now. But uh, they didn't have a forum, so they kinda kept it low key, but they are looking at getting at least one of the governor's house. They're putting in their money to uh, and they're identifying what, what's to put it on, or possibly houses that, you know, are getting to the point where they might get torn down or whatever the case may be. But they are uh, starting to move forward in a good direction, so it forms my heartbeat from there. So uh, it's kind of nice seeing things happening and uh, they actually talk of potential businesses coming in on the deals in Dakota Hill and whatnot too. So um, there, uh, it's kind of nice seeing some growth instead of decrease because after we left in nineteen eighty-five, uh, it's, it's definitely lost a lot of businesses since then. So um, it, it's real nice and I'm real happy to be a part of being the liaison and seeing what's going on, so.
Excited about that.
Alright. Flat grant. Proposals discussion. With the proposals?
So I was glad to see we got five. And I was glad to see that uh, you know, certainly some of them seem to have real strong local, local connections, which I was pleased about as well. I, uh, so we had that public input session. Um, I I drafted a, a rubric. I haven't provided it to everybody. Um, I don't know if that's something we want to use to try to formalize things more, or if we just wanna use the weights that we had in the RFP. I think that it, it, you, you know, we, we, we need to do that cuz those are what we did publish, so uh, I don't have those in front of me. I can hold them up pretty easy though. But we could do a more qualitative review and just make sure that we're taking into consideration what those weights are. So I, yeah, I'm open for suggestions about how people would like to um, like to handle reviewing these. You know, I think that we could try to refine it down to like a two top proposals or something like that and then consider doing an interview. Uh, we haven't, we haven't discussed exactly how, how we want that to happen. If the interview should be um, conducted by the full commission, if we wanna have one or two representatives conduct an interview. Sure, sure, questions about it?
Well, I'm gonna start out my feelings on this. And haven't studied. I've gone, glanced through all the proposals, you know, and three of them are right in that two forty-nine and change. Two of the other ones, you know, lower price. But my heart really wasn't in any of that. My biggest concern right now is the, are we gonna really get the money? That's my fear. And do you have a concern about?
I have been very concerned about it, but each day I get less concerned when I don't get an email from the feds telling us to worry about it cuz everybody else seems like they're getting emails from the feds telling them to worry about stuff. And I think especially because I'd received that communication about the raise grant one. It made me think, well, federal highways is sending out notices about changes here, so.
That's today. Do you truly trust Trump?
No. I'm, I'm comfortable saying that on the record. I do not.
Yeah, that's, that's my biggest concern. I, I, I don't feel that we can open up the county to two hundred and fifty thousand dollar liability.
Hmm.
Because it's gotta, we gotta pay for it out of our pocket. We gotta ask the state. The state's gotta get from feds and the state just sent this thing through this highway fund. If they don't get the money, when are you getting the money? I mean, they've made that clear on that. Obviously, that's gonna be the same way with this.
That is in our funding agreement. That is.
And there's, you listen to things, it's not just, it's, it's, the fluff is going. That's what's going first. They're gonna go down the line and the fluff is going.
That has not been my impression. My impression has been absolutely willy-nilly slashing and burning all across the federal government. I mean, if they're, think they're cutting fluff, I've got, I have called our senators with a couple have called our senators with a couple of specific names of people that are the opposite of of South Dakotans, national award-winning, future farmers of America, you know, national award winners that dedicated their life to getting a PhD, to come back to this state to dedicate their career to growing walleye so grandpas can teach their kids how to catch them. Those people are getting fired when they can make three times what they're making in the private sector. They are the opposite of fluff. So I'm I'm I I actually think they are just cutting stuff
Yep.
where they a- almost randomly, you know?
Well.
People in veteran service getting slashed, I mean, like.
Yeah, it's challenged. Look, I agree with everything. There there's no rhyme or reason, but this isn't gonna be a priority for any.
Well, I think that, yeah, it's it's a, it's transportation funding, infrastructure funding. You know, I think that those things I'm hoping they are less interested in mucking around with. And I shared at the meeting, you know, the only communication I've heard relevant to this has been we want to direct more funds to states like South Dakota. So I I would think that, you know.
Also, the people that got dismissed heard it the morning of. I mean, I that's my concern. I can't that's that's a lot of money. We we don't have.
Yeah.
That's my biggest concern, you know, I just, I was reading through these and my heart just wasn't in it. It's like, yeah, this is, you know? This is a want, not a need.
Is there clarity that we could receive prior to the next meeting that might make uh, that might make you more comfortable? So if we have something from federal highways that gives us some clarity on what what grant monies are or aren't going to, I mean, this is already allocated to us. It would be against the law not to give it to us, so.
You're gonna find a federal agency that's gonna guarantee us that? I don't think you can. Yeah, it would be wonderful.
Yeah.
But I don't think there's a person out there. I mean, the state's not guaranteeing it. So. Oh, anybody else have an opinion? I'm not the only guy.
Where's it coming? Out of the budget.
So.
Where specifically?
So out of the, out of the commissioner's uh contingency, and we would pay it in in three portions if we went with like, say, one of the two hundred and forty-nine thousand dollar options. Uh, we could do that in in three payments that would fit comfortably within our contingency and then uh they're promising us a thirty-day reimbursement, so. So we make a payment, pay that off. Once that what's been reimbursed, then our contingency fund would be filled back up again and then we do, we make a next payment. So that's how we, that that's how I had proposed uh structuring payment so that we don't have to do any uh supplements.
Or be as funny. See things that doesn't happen in the county, but I probably agree with what you're saying as well. It's, who knows, when when are influenced by me, that that's the horrible carrotless being day of this life, basically it's here, but there's no promise, you know, and that's that's the hard part. But yes, as uh like some realtors, you know, and um she takes candidate tours and people in the university and she says a lot of the first thing they ask is what kind of trail system do you have? What kind of, you know, recreational opportunities do you have? And she'll show what we have and it's impressive, but a lot of times even the chairs or the departments will say, well, you know, if you're looking for something, you know, you can use balls and you which is not helping us, you know? So uh, the need for something like this is here is just like you said, the timing is scary because being on the hook for two hundred and fifty thousand will not be.
Sorry.
Yeah.
You're saying this contingency fund? Commissioner contingency, right?
Yes, yep.
How much is that?
One hundred and fifty.
Right?
Hundred and thirty thousand.
Hundred and thirty.
Yeah. I think actually the the real proper way to do it, if you were gonna go that route.
I'm sorry, yeah.
Would be probably to take it out of like commissioners professional services and then do a contingency transfer from commissioners contingency.
Because this wouldn't really be a contingency, yeah.
Yeah, so I think really the proper budgetary way to account for it would be to do that. And then as that money comes back in, it can just be um, that expenditure can be reduced.
But in better times, and that was uh given the money would come back in the better scenario.
Right.
But there goes our contingencies. Our contingency wouldn't even cover them.
So is there an encumbrance process with this at all where if we start this, we'd be guaranteed it? Because that would be you know, much like Dave, I I would feel much better if there was a way that if we started the process that we are guaranteed, you know, we can take cover where we can guarantee you can see that money back. But it is, I know I've thought about this too, it's trust me, I I want this as much as anybody, but it is just scary the way we're pulling the chains right now.
Yeah. I mean, for all we know, I don't know where the original funds for that agribusiness grant from the state is, but if those, I mean, those may well be federal dollars too. We might have that six hundred thousand dollars we think we're gonna get for the elevator, those, if that's really there, maybe we need to pause that project. There's a lot of things we get federal dollars for. And that might be, I mean, we need, we and every other freaking American needs a little clarity on what you can count on and what you can't be, basically.
Also gotta weigh the projects between want and need.
Mm-hmm.
Our greater need for that elevator role than this.
I think that that would, uh, different ones of our constituents would have different opinions about that. I think, I think that there's many people in the county that might say there are plenty of places where you can sell your corn and beans right now that they're actually spending one point three million dollars on this is not a wise use of county funds. I'm not saying that's my opinion, but I know that we have constituents that would potentially feel that.
You're not thinking about all the the grain that's leaving this county over county roads?
Yep.
What's, what is the where?
They are not. I mean, don't, don't characterize that as my opinion. I'm just, I'm just trying to share that there, we have a breadth of opinion in the county and and it's not a clear cut. What people think is what.
Way, there's a breadth of people that that also have no need for what you're suggesting.
Yeah, absolutely.
There's, there's a lot of people that, you know, we're spending, you know, county resources, county time and county money on state land and cornland.
Yeah.
Because once that kayak launch hits water, it's core.
Yeah. Yep.
We're developing core.
Yep. They could seem, I mean, yeah. We could, we could get deep in the weeds on what the, you know, broad benefits might be and things like that, like, but.
In the recreational.
Yes, yeah.
This is farm to market.
Yeah, I mean, similarly, this will increase property values. I mean, those those lots that uh in the Hine addition down there would be more valuable if they have a nicer facility right next to them, if they have a multi-mile of trail connecting at the town. And that's not just me talking, there's you know, some well-designed studies that that demonstrate that. So I mean, it's yeah.
So it's gonna increase prop- increase property values. Not gonna get it. Um, but I'm I'm gonna just stick with, I I'm not trusting the current administration to revolve with. Unless something changes, I'm I'm gonna be opposed to this, so. That's gonna be my.
Okay, so a couple of questions I would have for the state's attorney. So I understand that this is actually probably a Supreme Court question. But but based on previous prior settled law, if Congress has allocated funds to the executive branch, the executive branch has administered those funds, they've awarded a contract, a funding agreement is in place, is there precedent for the federal government uh clawing back those funds when we follow the obligations in our funding agreement?
I don't know. Um, I mean, I think the I think that I would, the concern I would have is regardless of the legality, um, you know, I I think I already saw a lawsuit that was started yesterday regarding the, you know, email that was sent out on behalf of uh, Trump through Elon Musk this weekend on, you know, responding with five things you did this week. Um, there are, so I mean, there's gonna be so much, there's gonna be so many lawsuits. Is there a theory that could be made to try to go after the federal government? I'm sure yes is the answer to that. Question though is how bogged down is everything gonna be? And I think immensely is gonna be the answer. You know, so what does that even look like? The reality of being successful in a lawsuit is one question, but then also the timing will be the other. So I imagine you're about to see a lot
resources for us to do that.
Right. Which would also be immense because I would become comfortable saying that my gut would say that you'd have to be a federal lawsuit, which is, I don't, I'm not even, uh, I don't have the license to practice in federal court, so. It it'd be complicated.
Sure.
Now, right, because I think the the question is, is can they is, even if the answer is no, that the concern I would have is will they regardless of what the answer is? I mean, even if, even if what, you know, the, I think you bring a good question, legal theory question. But if the answer is no, I'm not sure that's gonna stop this administration from still doing that.
So your current opinion is that this administration might not better follow federal court orders, things like that?
I don't think precedent is even a word in there. There is no.
I think that everything is so drastically different today than it was just months ago and for all of time, at least my luck of time, uh, that I would feel I just feel like there's way more unknowns today, I think would be the safest thing to say.
Well, I, how about I propose this? So I think that you all have been operating in in good faith and I appreciate it and I take these concerns as being expressed in good faith. I share them. Um, so uh, I would be willing to spend some time trying to do some research on these questions. And by that, I mean contacting federal highways, um, having discussions with people at the state and the federal level about what they're seeing, what kind of internal communications are happening. We're not the only flat grant recipient. We're two hundred and fifty thousand out of, I think, something like I can't remember, at least more than a million, you know, so we're, we're one of several projects. So you know, I'd be happy to get in touch with some of those other entities and see where they're at, see if any of them have gotten any memorandum of understanding, if there's areas that are, you know, at this point, we've had a new secretary of transportation for a little while, maybe they're got their appointees settled out and they're kind of doing some frameworks. Maybe they're saying, you know, this, this group of pro- of funding pools are black, you know, these, these are blacklisted, we're probably gonna be trying to get rid of these, these ones are whitelisted, where, you know, we're comfortable with the way that they were written, things like that. I mean, if you guys are all right with that, I'd be happy to bring that as a report back to the next, next commission meeting on next Tuesday. Tell you what I find out.
I have no problem with collecting information.
Yeah.
Said at this point.
I may well get just a bunch of people who are like I'd be as worried as you are, man. So, yeah, and if so, I'll I'll bring that back to you, you know, and, yeah.
What was the timeline again?
So the timeline on this was um that we would uh, we would seek to make a determination uh by mid-March. So, and some of the proposals have a starting dates as early as as mid-March, so. You know? But my timing with, you know, that that closing date was to make sure that we had a chance to hear it at this meeting and then also hear it at the next meeting and then also hear it at a, at a third meeting in a row if we needed to. So this um I definitely saw a lot of, you know, these are not at all the same proposal. It was, it was quite interesting to dig into them. So if you haven't had a chance to dig into them, it's interesting. And also, I think in the future, we will use engineering firms for more things. And this is kind of a neat window in my mind into several of the engineering firms that are operating in our agent area, detailed explanations and resumes of who's working for them. You know, you get a vision of of how, how do they approach a project like this? Because it it comes out real different. We've got Banner locally, we've got Shimmer or or Stockwell, those are the ones that did the uh, the one downtown. Couple of these are are groups of like three different entities that are working together. So it was you know, definitely interesting stuff. I encourage you to 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 take a look through them, even just uh, even just for that value. So, but I think that's, that's adequate discussion for me for today. I will, I'll do that work, so.
Second obsession?
Anything specifically from me?
Anybody? Second obsession. Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Motion to second. All those in favor?
Alright.
Vote. Motion carries, we're adjourned.